Thank you, and welcome to the Mesa City Council Meeting for January the 27th. All of our council is present. We will begin our meeting with a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, led by Vice Mayor Freeman. So please stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first action on our first item on our agenda is to take action on the consent agenda. So we invite Mr. Kevin Christopher to come forward to read the consent agenda.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. These are the items on the consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk will be considered as a group by the city council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless a council member or citizen requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered as a separate item. If a citizen wants an item removed, the blue card must be completed and given to the city clerk prior to the council's vote on the consent agenda. Item 2, approval amendments of previous meetings as written. Item 3A, act on liquor license application for Mesa Association of Sports for the Disabled, four-day event, February 13th through the 17th, at the Mesa Tennis Center at Gina Free Park, 4125 East McKellips Road. Item 4A, act on contract for purchase of a rear loader refuse truck for the Transportation Department, as requested by the Fleet Services Department. Item 4B, act on contract amendment and dollar limit increase to the term contract for fire apparatus and parts for the Mesa Fire and Medical Department. Item 4C, act on contract to purchase six pumper trucks, five replacements, and one addition for the Mesa Fire and Medical Department. This purchase is funded by the 2018 Public Safety Bonds and Public Safety Sales Tax. Item 4D, act on three-year term contract with two years of renewal options for automated driveway gate operators and ADA doors preventative maintenance and repair services for the Parks Recreation and Community Facilities Department. Item 4E, act on one-year renewal with a one-year renewal option to the term contract for interpreter translation services for the Mesa Police, Mesa Municipal Court, City Clerk, and Community Services Department. Item 4F, act on one-year renewal with a one-year renewal option for software service for the hosted customer relationship management and box office ticketing system for the Mesa Arts Center. Item 4G, act on contract to purchase network packet collection hardware for the Information Technology Department. Item 4H, act on contract to purchase a replacement high-availability data storage system for the Information Technology Department. Item 4I, act on contract to purchase an expansion of a very high-frequency fire hazard zone radio system for the Topaz Regional Wireless Cooperative. The cost will be shared among the fire medical members of the cooperative, City of Mesa, Town of Gilbert, Superstition Fire Medical District, Town of Queen Creek, and the Rio Verde Fire District. Item 4J, act on contract to purchase a one-year research and advisory subscription service from Infotech Research Group Incorporated for the Information Technology Department. Item 4K, act on dollar limit increase to the term contract for industrial supplies for the materials and supply warehouse for citywide departments. Item 4L, act on three-year term contract with two years of renewal options for trench, shoring, safety equipment rental services for the Water Resources and Energy Resources Departments. Item 4M, act on contract for First Avenue Right-of-Way Improvements Project, Phase One, Hibbert to Lesweer, construction manager at risk, second of two guaranteed maximum price. This project is funded by 2013 authorized street bonds and 2014 authorized gas, electric, and water bonds. Item 5A, act on resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to enter into a maintenance agreement with Temple Corporation of the Church of LDS and Suburban Land Reserve for First Avenue between Mesa Drive and Lesweer. Item 5B, act on resolution approving the first substantial amendment to the City of Mesa Annual Action Plan for fiscal year 2019-2020, and authorizing the city manager to sign and submit the amendment to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Item 5C, act on resolution approving the transfer of city-owned real property and improvements located near the intersection of East University Drive and North Hobson to A New Leaf Incorporated. Item 5D, act on resolution vacating two 33-foot portions of road right-of-way in the 1900 block of Old South Mesa Drive between East Baseline Road and East One Need Avenue, and reserving public utilities easements. This is requested by the abutting property owners. The rights of way are no longer necessary for a public purpose. Item 6A, introduction of ordinance amending Title 11, the zoning ordinance of the Mesa City Code, by adding Chapter 15, Leisure and Recreation Zone District to Article 2, base zone, and by adding the Leisure and Recreation Base Zone to Chapter 3, designation of zoning districts, zoning map, and boundaries to Article 1 introductory provisions. Item 7A, act on ordinance amending the Form Based Code, Chapter 59, Sections 14 and 15 of Title 11, the zoning ordinance of the Mesa City Code, pertaining to the parking requirements for mid-rise and high-rise building types. The amendment will make the construction of structured garage parking optional. Item 7B, act on ordinance regarding ZON 19-00473, within the 3100 block of Southeast Ridge, located south of Guadalupe Road and east of Haas Road, rezone and site plan review to allow for a single-residence development. Item 8A, act on ordinance regarding ZON 18-00891, 535 West Baseline Road, located west of Country Club Drive on the south side of Baseline Road, rezone to allow for development of an industrial use. Item 8B, act on resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to enter into a development agreement with PDE Investments to limit certain land uses and property located at 535 West Baseline Road. Item 9A, act on recommendation by the Audit Finance and Enterprise Committee to accept the city's comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2019. Mayor and councilmembers, these are the items on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Christopher. Ms. Mickelson, have there been any requests to speak on an item on the consent agenda?
No requests, ma'am.
Thank you. Mr. Freeman, I know you had a question for Mr. Smith.
Mr. Smith, earlier in the study session, I conflicted off some one of these. Does that...do I need to conflict off one of the votes?
Mayor and Vice Mayor, that's for a future maintenance agreement that I think will be coming next month.
Okay.
Not on this one, that's on this council.
Thanks for watching me.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. We have a motion by Mr. Luna, seconded by Councilmember Duff. Please cast your vote. Voting unanimous and adopting the consent agenda. The next item on our agenda is item 10. That's to conduct a public hearing on modifications to terms, rates, fees, and charges of city-owned utilities. These are items 10B through 10F and relate to the city's electric, gas, water, wastewater, and solid waste utilities. I declare the public hearing open. Ms. Mickelson, has anyone requested to speak on this item? Thank you. Councilmembers, let's discuss these items. We have one, two, three, four, five different items to vote on. We need to vote on them separately, but for discussion purposes, why don't we lump them together? Do we have discussion on these items?
Downstairs, Brian told me that this chart was in the November city council meeting, but I can't find this attachment anywhere in any previous council meeting.
Mayor, Councilmember Whitaker, we apologize. We thought that it was in the notice of intent on November 4th. It was not. I believe, though, that it was communicated to council in a city manager update, but I would have to clarify that whether it was or not.
But it's never been attached in any city council meeting, is that correct? Like, it's never been presented to council?
I don't believe so. I believe it was not in this meeting. I believe it was in a city manager update, weekly update.
And that it hasn't been included in a council meeting? This is like the first time since what year have we not included this in these utility rate approval meeting?
I wouldn't know, Councilmember Whitaker. I'd have to go back. I can tell you that it was not in the October discussions. We finalized it in November, and we posted to our website, and I believe it was included in the city manager update, that that was now available.
All I'm saying is that in every previous year when we approve utility rates, this homeowner affordability report in every single year has been inside there, and it's not in this year's report for the first time ever. I find that troubling, given that there's the Yes on Affordability Utilities Initiative, and we've excluded the homeowners affordability study in our city council documents. So I just find it interesting that you can't find this chart anywhere in any of the attachments like it has been throughout previous history. I don't have any other questions in regards to the documents.
Well, Candace, you did indicate that that chart is on the city website, is that correct? Where can someone go if they want to see this? And again, the chart, I believe, compares utility rates with Mesa and other communities. Is that correct?
Mayor, that's correct. It is available on Office of Management and Budget's website. So if you go to the mesaaz.gov and go to the Office of Management and Budget, there is a large icon that says affordability report, I believe is what it's called, and if you click on that, you'll have the full report.
Okay, thank you.
And that document has always been available on our website. As we update it, we update it to our website.
Yeah, so I'll just point out, you know, in 2016, we were the fourth most unaffordable city in the utility. Then we moved up to the third most unaffordable city. Then we moved up to the second, and then this year, we decided to insert Tucson, which isn't even in the Valley, so to put our numbers down. And I just think that the clear lack of transparency in this report, that's obviously generated with a bias. So I'm not voting to approve any of these because I feel like there's no integrity coming out of this report in the first place.
Mayor and Councilmember Whitaker, as I stated downstairs, since this is a different meeting, I think it should be said again, is that the calculations of this have not changed. The only thing that's changed on this report is the insertion of Tucson, thinking it is a more comparable city to the city of Mesa than the other ones versus a Gilbert or a Queen Creek. The other things we also looked at was private water companies, that some of our Mesa residents do have private water companies, and they do pay significantly higher water bills than the city of Mesa bill. Those are not on that particular chart because they only have a water company. So we can't compare property tax and sales tax and so forth. So the only one that's on the main chart is Tucson. If Tucson had been calculated to have a lower cost than Mesa, we would have included it on the chart as well. It just happens to be above us.
It's called a Valley Homeowners Comparison Study Chart, right?
So Mayor, Councilmember Whitaker, if we change the title, I can change the title. We're looking for comparison benchmarks. We felt that Tucson was a better benchmark for us than Queen Creek.
Yeah, I guess my only point is if the purpose of the report is for people to determine which cities are the most affordable cities, I don't think that an individual who's shopping for a house or looking for a place to rent in the Phoenix metro area is going to decide to go to Tucson because Tucson's more affordable, right? It's been called a Valley-City Comparison Report in perpetuity, right? And like so suddenly, we just changed the name and the purpose of the report. Again, it's dishonest as far as I'm concerned.
Hey, do we have other questions from councilmembers or additional discussion? I do have a few things to...thank you, Candace. I think this is probably a good time to remind ourselves that Mesa is somewhat unique in the way that we finance our city government. We can...I think we all heard the story of the 1945 council action, purchasing all of the utilities and abolishing the city primary property tax and the philosophy that was adopted at that time that is still in place at this time, that we would use utility revenues in place of a primary property tax to pay for police and fire and libraries and parks and all the things that we need to provide to our residents. So the result of that is, yes, Mesa's water rates are going to be higher than average because of the lack of a primary property tax. That's the system that we inherited, and so there's nothing surprising about that. The question is, is Mesa a frugal organization? How are we at spending when compared to our peers? And so the chart that really I think is the most telling on this point was published a couple of months ago by the Arizona Republic, and Mesa is among the very most affordable cities when it comes to spending. Mesa spends less than nearly everyone else per capita in the Valley. So I'm...this is a frugal organization. This is not an organization that is taking in more money than it needs to, and we just have a different formula for how we pay for things. I do have also comments on these various items. I am in support of most of the items. For example, and I'll take them one by one, item 10B, the electric utility ordinance. It's worth...this was in the staff presentation, but for those who maybe didn't see it, it's worth noting that the net effect of this action is to decrease the amount that our electric customers are going to be serving, are going to be paying. So again, nothing that could be considered an increase. Item 10C with the gas utility is identical. The adjustment, the net impact of that is that the average bill for a natural gas utility customer will go down. Item 10D, I am going to make an alternative motion in this case because what we have in item 10D is water utility services for non-residential water utility customers is being raised, and I support that because as we indicated earlier, the formula in Mesa is that we generate revenue, particularly from our non-commercial and non-residential customers, to pay for things around here. So we want to charge what the market will bear in those situations and from those customers. However, item 10D also tweaks the tiers that we use for residential customers and arguably could put some residential customers into a tier where there is a higher rate. Now, the rationale behind that is we're trying to encourage conservation. We're trying to encourage people that have large lots and lots of grass and lots of trees to try to find a more efficient way of using their water. But I don't want anyone to think that we might be taking some action where the result would be an increase in residential water rates. So I'm going to be making a motion that we separate those issues and come back and consider the non-residential utility adjustment, which I support, and take out the one that arguably might impact residential customers. Item 10E, again, is non-residential wastewater utility service. This is primarily for the big commercial, big industrial users, and that's important for us to charge a fair rate there that they can...it's okay for them to step up and pay a little more. And again, item 10F is commercial barrel solid waste. This is where the city competes with the private market, and so the city charges what the market will bear. If we're overcharging, we'll lose customers and we'll be out of business. So we do need to be flexible there in the rates that we charge because we're competing in a business environment, and so it's appropriate to adjust the rates there. So again, just to summarize, I am in support of items 10B, 10C. I'll be making a separate motion for item 10D, but I do also support items E and F.
I have comment unless we're moving forward the motion at this point. I'm not sure what process you want to follow. But it's in regards to this last issue if we're moving forward.
Well, if you'd like to say something, go ahead.
Yeah, so in regards to the mayor's comments, the homeowner affordability study report takes into account the primary property tax and the secondary property tax. So let's be clear that Mesa is the second most unaffordable city in the Valley with primary property tax cooked into the report. So it's not as if our utilities are the second most expensive. It recalculates property tax back into the report. So I'm not really sure where you went with the issue about what relevance that had to do with this specific report that shows we're the second most unaffordable city in the Valley. As far as item 10D and E go, are we tabling this to a future discussion? I'm confused as to how we're moving forward with this.
Well, we'll see how it unfolds. So Mr. Freeman has made a motion. Mr. Haredi has seconded the motion, and I believe that motion would be for approval of all of the items that are on the agenda. If that's the case, then I will be voting against that and making a substitute motion because I would like to, on item 10D, extract the residential user tweak, or the residential...does that make sense?
Mayor, you know, for clarity, I can withdraw my motion, and we can discuss it further and then separate what you'd like to do.
So Mayor, can I just maybe explain the rationale here? So I think the mayor explained, well, this is 10D, so that's what we're talking about. 10D on that item, I think Mayor articulated the non-residential water utility services. I don't think that's in question. These are our super-large users, and we're trying to make sure we're capturing the costs to provide water services to them, and we need to catch up. We haven't been increasing their rates over the last few years as much as we have on the residential side, so we've proposed an increase for the non-residential water utility services. In addition, we did make an adjustment to the tiers. We've been making adjustments to the tiers on water consumption based on our analytics of the patterns and of usage throughout the city. On average, the average homeowner in Mesa, Arizona, is somewhere probably 6,000, 6,500, maybe 7,000 gallons is what they're using. What this proposal is really affecting those who are at the upper tier of that, the 8,000 and 9,000 gallon tiers. What it does is it slips those who are at 9,000 gallons down. Am I saying that right? So that they're going to be impacted sooner, and the tier stepped up in the rate. We did that with the idea that most likely, based on our analytics of individual homeowners' usage, that water usage is mostly outdoor usage. And so the intent here was really not necessarily a kind of water rate revenue generator, but it really was just the opposite, is trying to encourage these big outdoor water users to encourage them, incentivize them to adopt better water consummation measures and look at ways to try to mitigate against using that water. We consider, you know, once you're getting up to 8, 9, 10,000 gallons, you're...it's not just indoor use now, it's large water use outside. So that was the intent of the tier. But at the mayor's point, if you want to remove that out of 10D, we can. What we'd probably ask to do is just pass on taking any action on 10D, and then we would come back for introduction, reintroduce this item, if it's council's pleasure, with the same item except for the adjustment in the tier. We could do that on February 10th, and then with adoption or introduction on the 10th, and then approval on the 24th. I think the city attorney will let us do that. And then we'll just have...that means just the implementation of the super-user water rate will just probably be maybe 30 days after the rest of the rates apply. That's the difference. That's why it's in here. It really is intended to try to change the behavior on outdoor water use. That's why it's in here.
Let me make an observation on the pending motion, too, because the way it's agendized and the way that I announced we were going to vote on it, I said we're going to entertain a motion one by one on each of these items.
That's what you said.
Yes, so I think the way to consider the motion and the second would be for the approval of Agenda Item 10B, which I intend to vote in favor of, because the point that we were just discussing relates to item 10D. So why don't we vote one at a time on each of these motions? So we have a motion for approval of Agenda Item 10B, made by Mr. Freeman, seconded by Mr. Haredi. Please cast your vote. Motion passes 6 to 1 with Mr. Whitaker voting nay. Next, is there a motion regarding Agenda Item 10C? Thank you. A motion for approval's been made by Mr. Freeman, seconded by Mr. Luna. Please cast your votes. Thank you. Same vote as last time, so the motion passes. Agenda Item 10D, so if you don't mind, I'll make a motion just so I'm clear on at least what my position is. I am going to move that we direct staff to reintroduce this item without the modification to the residential use tiers. So that's my motion. Anyone want to like to...so I'm going to make that motion move. Thank you. Mr. Freeman made that motion for me. Thank you, Mr. Freeman.
Mayor, if I may, just for clarification, just so people know, for the dates, we will introduce on February 10th. We'll have the February 24th as the hearing, so in case people are listening and they want to come back for the hearing on that topic, they'll be able to tune in or come in person on that date for the hearing.
Okay, thank you. So I did make that motion. I'm sorry, Mr. Thompson.
Just wanted to ask a real quick question. So 10D, so we're tabling that. Is there an opportunity maybe to have a presentation so that it's laid out and it's very clear what exactly we're doing, Chris? Maybe in a study session.
So essentially, it'll be...yeah, we can do that between now and the 10th. It is simply keeping what the proposal is in place. We're proposing, I think it's a 6% increase on the super...I forget what the threshold of their usage for the super-user, water users, is a 6%. There hasn't been any adjustment to that rate in some time. And then what we're doing, though, in the ordinance that you see today, we're going to eliminate the provision that we talked about, the tiers. So that will essentially be eliminated from the ordinance. So it's more, everything stays the same, except we're taking out the residential tier adjustment.
Is there a way to do a...is there a way to find that residential comparison of those that don't water outdoors and those that do use a lot of outdoor water on a side-by-side comparison so that we can see what that baseline would be normally and then what we're trying to...because I know that several years ago, the previous council, we put in place the tiered structure, and that was in an effort to try to get our citizens to really push water conservation without preaching water conservation, and that was the effort. But looking back then, knowing what we're knowing now, was that the right way to move to scale? And I think to Councilmember Whitaker's point, you know, doing that side-by-side comparison so we know what the average homeowner is using versus what the super-user is using.
Yeah, no, we can do that. We can...we'll be glad to present that to you. I mean, for example, in Eastmark, they're probably using less than 5,000 gallons. The rest, I think the city is just over 6,000. And this tier that was being impacted were 8,000 and 9,000 gallon users. So it's a different scale, and it actually is the phased-in approach of this water conservation initiative that was started years ago, but we didn't want to slam them in the first year, so it was a progressive kind of over years. We were going to keep ratcheting that number up so that if they had a big amount of outdoor water use, we weren't going to try to incentivize negatively...
Because I remember that conversation was really about trying to hold that level at a baseline, anything above that really...
That's what this is. It's just a continued phasing in of that conversation.
It may be worth having that conversation again as well, maybe update the rest of the council that wasn't part of that discussion. I know the three of us were probably the only ones that were involved in that original discussion back in 2016.
Okay. I got a question. Isn't that a bit speculative? Like, how do we determine what water is being used for lawns and what water is being used for, I guess, what we'll call like mandatory water purposes?
Again, we can talk about in the study session. We've done the analysis. We can show what users and even by land use, we can tell you kind of the averages. We know just by national standards, by Mesa standards, what the typical...there's lots of studies been done about how much a typical home family uses in the interior, and it really doesn't fluctuate too much. Where the adjustment, where the changes take place is when we see, and we can see the larger lots, we can see the pools, you can see the different patterns of usage in those areas. That's why we can see in Eastmark, which has smaller lots, very efficient appliances, that those numbers are much different than the same-sized lots in the older parts of Mesa. There's just because of those changes. And it's a very...and we can also tell you literally how many customers this will be impacting, and it's a pretty small, smaller number, but we can bring that to you.
I agree, there's a compelling argument to do this for conservation purposes and to incentivize being efficient water users. I agree with that, but I think earlier, this council, in this process, made the announcement that we're not going to raise residential utility rates. And so having said that, I don't feel like I can in good conscience do this because it arguably is putting some people into a category where they're going to pay higher rates for their water. And so for this season, I'm saying I've already committed to not raising residential utility rates, and I'm going to stick to that. All right, we have a motion that's been made, seconded by Mr. Freeman. All in favor, please cast your votes. Okay, 6 in favor with Mr. Whitaker voting nay. Next, we'll entertain a motion for Agenda Item 10E. Would someone like to make a motion? Thank you, Mr. Luna, seconded by Mr. Haredi. Please cast your votes. 6 in favor with Mr. Whitaker voting nay. 10F, is there a motion? Thank you, Mr. Luna, seconded by Mr. Freeman. Please cast your vote. Jeremy, I think we need you to push the button. There we go. 6 in favor with Mr. Whitaker voting nay. Thank you. That concludes the action items on our agenda for today. The next item on our agenda is items from citizens present. Ms. Mickelson, has anyone requested to speak? Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we're adjourned.